Carly.
Thank you.
I got the big one. I have a lot of papers, so.
It's like the contrast that the largest I've ever seen and the smallest.
Well, except, except that.
Oh.
Called this board work session to order.
Well, as, as you well know, past the bond issue in September of two thousand eighteen, not only did we have to worry about building facilities, but we have to worry about redoing boundaries. We've talked about that for about fourteen months now. Talked about a process. We talked specifically about that process at our summer retreat. And we talked about how we would come back to you in December with our update. What's December already? So here we are, and I'm going to turn it over to Doug Morrison to talk about the process that we're doing for redoing the boundaries.
All right, thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. So we have a brief presentation to kind of go through here. We'll kind of go through timeline and some processes and kind of how we see things laying out over the next, you know, really six or seven months and really even longer than that. So I'm going to start with the timeline. So what we have here is what I call the July to December timeframe that we're sort of in here now. It's I call it the incubator phase to some extent. But the first item on there, the background work by district staff to create new boundary scenarios for elementary, middle, and high school. We've been working on that for since, look, since August, since August twenty-seventh, actually, we have a group of us in the district that have been working to create some scenarios, possible scenarios of boundaries, mainly from the standpoint that when we get to the boundary committee, we have to have a starting point, you know, to be able to start from, to get input from. So, and so we have had some tools that we've been working with on that. We have a software platform that we use for other things in the district called Tableau. And so I've got my group back here, Renee and Nicole and Austin, been really integral part of the team at pulling together and allowing us to have sort of a, what I call a sandbox to basically take twenty-five thousand pens, if you think about it, put it on a map, and then to be able to draw, you know, boundaries around it, be able to count what's in there, move options around to try to balance things out. And so that's just been a very significant process for us and something that most districts would probably pay tens of thousands of dollars to have done by a consultant. These guys are doing, and so we have that expertise in those tools right here in the district, which is, which has been great. We've been also able to take those and then create some tools from that. So think about if you're a parent and you're trying to deal with, you know, three, four different options for middle school or high school, how does that impact me? So we've been able to take that and create some online tools that will allow parents to go in and put their address in and see where they fall under the different options or view the different options for whether it's middle school, high school. So those are very, you know, significant things that are sort of going on in the background that we'll have up and going by the time the task force meets in, in mid-January. So the other, the next item on there is really ramp up and programming strategy alternatives. So when you do boundaries, you have to give consideration to other things like where you're going to put your specialty schools. So think of the honors program in middle school or, you know, the Spanish program. You have to make room for those in, in schools. And so those are considerations that you have to, that you have to make or rise programs and stuff. So all that type of stuff is being sort of considered in preparation for the, the boundary committee that we're starting doing. Conducting small friendly focus groups. So a good example of that would be that we met with a group of former board members and other people that were, had significant roles in the district at the time, the last boundaries that were done. And so that was good feedback for us as to lessons they learned and things that they used during the process to, to get themselves through, through that. Establish guidelines, which we'll cover here in a little bit. Assemble the boundary committee of community members, and I'll cover that as well, and then hire a facilitator. So that's kind of what's been going on in the background here, leading up to the first set of boundary committee meetings. So January through March, as I talked about, the boundary committee meetings will start. And then on the heels of that, there'll be a series of public feedback sessions. So there's five of those scheduled. They'll be at each middle school, open for public, and so we've got dates for those as well. What we're thinking about is in April, there'll be an initial recommendation to the board for as far as boundaries, taking all that feedback, presenting you guys with an option or options, and then really giving you guys enough time to deliberate over those, to study, deliberate it. There may be other things that you guys want to see, feedback that you've been receiving. Can we do this? Can we do that? So, you know, trying to give you guys as a board plenty of time to get comfortable with the options that have been presented, make sure you've heard the feedback. And then ultimately, what we're thinking in the June timeframe is that we finalize those boundaries and then also where different programming is going to be and, and also a ramp up strategy. So will seniors go here? Will juniors? Will siblings? All of that type of stuff. Also, those decisions have to be made as well, and then ultimately the vote. So then after the vote's made and the boundaries are sort of determined, July through December that year really is educating the community, right? Here's what the boundaries mean to you as a parent, what your situation is with your kids, and notifications, that whole process. And then leading up to the sort of December of two thousand twenty, where we have our normal open enrollment signup process for people that want to opt out of their current, you know, choice to at least request open enrollment, and then they have to decide to extend the week and move those. And then August twenty twenty-one, new schools open and attendance boundaries go live. Task force selection. So November twenty-first to twenty-seventh, we took applications. Great work. We had a tremendous response to people that wanted to be on the task force. Hundred and sixty, hundred and sixty-one people that wanted to be on the task force. That's what all these pens represent. And so we had great distribution across the community, so it wasn't all maybe clumped in one area. And so then we went through them and did a random process of selecting people. Actually, that turned out to be these yellow items, and we still had pretty good dispersment of community. So we tried to make it as fair as we could. And then we have a few spots that were open for people that we needed to contribute, like maybe somebody from the city, homey apartment, folks like that, that we thought we needed for that as part of the task force. And so today, applicants were notified that to be, that they were selected for the task force, and they're given sort of one last chance to say yay or nay. That's so Deanne's looking to look back by December. So we're in pretty good shape on that. So if you think about the char, your, the school district boundary committee charge, so once the committee's formed, you can almost think, just like with the bond referendum, the first thing that, the first sort of item of action at the task force meeting, boundary committee meeting, is to, for the board, for you, to give the charge to the boundary committee. And so really saying what are, what do we want from you? And so we've outlined this, what we believe to be, you know, encompassing statement of what you would like them to do. So it says that the Sioux Falls School District has formed a boundary committee for the purpose of establishing primarily new middle school and high school attendance boundaries that provide an optimal learning environment for all students with the addition of Thomas Jefferson High School and Ben rifle Middle School set to open in fall of two thousand twenty-one. And then their charge is really to develop recommendations on new high school and middle school boundaries. And I say recommendations because I, I think it's important that the charge you give them is to come up with some recommendations and not give you one option that you are, that maybe the committee has split on and pass off to you. So it's a series of realistic, really, consideration or options that we can take forward to the community for input. And then also to provide you some guidance on student transition. So what's their feeling on whether, again, seniors won't be required to go to their, they can stay where they're at, juniors will have to, you know, it's sort of working through all those things, what happens with siblings, open enrollment, and all that type of stuff. So again, just to give you some guidance, you know, recommendations, assumptions, Thomas Jefferson to be open in fall of two thousand twenty-one, Ben rifle, two thousand twenty-one, and then elementary school boundaries not part of the charge. It's really not what they're having them do. And then the boundary committee guidelines, you can see there, there's some different priority areas and things that we want them to consider, things like quality of education and about, you know, sort of looking at the socioeconomic status amongst the schools like we've tried to do now with our, our schools. Student safety, well-being, and budget considerations. So those things we want them to consider as well. Natural borders as far as boundary lines, and then trying to, looking to accommodate future, future growth and change. So I think the guideline in the past has always been to try to create boundaries that are, would be in existence for at least five years, not so we wouldn't have to be in this situation again in two or three years. So that's, that's another goal. So this would be the charge that you would give to the committee opening night of the boundary committee meetings, and then they can take that and move forward. Refer to hiring the facilitator. So as you all know, with the bond referendum process, we hired Joe Donovan of the Donovan Group, and so I think that went over really well. And so we approached Joe again about doing this for the boundary committee and also the public input sessions. And so he's agreed to, to be our facilitator for that. And I think it's a lot better to have him in there so you guys can sit back and just take notes and, and, you know, gather information rather than trying to be up there, one of you facilitating the meeting. And so I think Joe has the ability to just, you know, take feedback and say, we hear you, we're going to put it, you know, over here and for consideration. And I think it really helps to have a facilitator where we can all sit back and sort of be observers or answer questions if we have to. So the task force meetings, we determined early on, so when we went out to people to see if you wanted to be on the task force, that we, we told them ahead of time when the meeting commitments were that they had to work around. So there'll be three of them, Monday, January twentieth, Wednesday, the twenty-ninth, and then Wednesday, February nineteenth. And we'll try to get through them in two hours, but that's the commitment that they all have signed up for. When they, when they signed up, they knew ahead of time what those dates are, so we didn't have to get everyone together and come up with those dates. So this isn't set in stone, but this is sort of, we're, we're starting to sort of synthesize what, what the meetings might look like as far as the content of the meetings. So meeting one, welcome and introductions, because there'll be about thirty folks there, right? The formal charge, which we just talked about from you guys to the boundary committee, give them some general background from the bond referendum, review of current school boundaries, so we'll just kind of give them a view of how everything looks today. And then we'll start to provide them with some, some alternatives that have been developed by the district staff and our team to say, based on everything we know, trying to balance school capacities, demographics, and all those other things of considerations, here are some options that we see. And present those to them and then get them to discuss those. And then if they want to see an alternative, we can take that and create those for the next meeting, for them to consider. They wanted to see this little pocket moved from Patrick Henry to Edison or whatever it is, right? That we have the ability to do that and present it to them next, the next time. So meeting two would be review of the alternatives that were, that came from the other, the last meeting, and then we would get into the high school boundary alternatives. And same thing, we would have some alternatives that we, we had come up with as a, as a district to say, here's one view of how we might think the boundaries look. And then same thing, they can discuss them, they can give them, say, you know, move this around, move that around, and then come back and present those at the next meeting. And then at the meeting three, we will also start to have some, get their input as far as the whole transition of what they think is fair as far as requiring students to, you know, who, you know, can siblings stay where they're at, can seniors, juniors, sophomores, all those types of things, sixth graders, whatever it is, this scenario. Discussion of the different alternatives, and then ultimately, hopefully coming up with a recommendation of alternatives that they would like to see going forward to, what I would really say at this point, the way the process works is to the community for consideration, just to, because then, then we'll be going to those five meeting, community meetings with some options. So those will be the five community input sessions. We have it at each middle school, just try to get the geographic representation. They're scheduled for five-thirty to six-thirty. Like that said, says they'll go longer than that. I think, you know, these boundaries are going to impact a lot of people, so I think we'll have a lot of interest. And I think we'll, Joe will try to facilitate it as best he can, but we don't want to cut anybody off either and not make them feel that they're not heard. So, I mean, we're just going to have to go into the first meeting and see what kind of crowd we get, how long it takes, and kind of adjust the other meetings from there. But those are the start times and the dates, and so we've been, you know, come up with those again ahead of time so we can get those out in the community so people know ahead of time, they can put them on the calendar. And by this time, they should know, based on, like I was referring to the tools we have, they'll know what options are going forward for community input, and they'll also have the ability to go in and see what that means to them personally about where their home resides under any of those different options, which will be, which will be, will be great. And then, just like with the boundary process, Deanne and her team will, will, we have a website that will be very transparent. So all the meetings that we have, there'll be minutes, there'll be, you know, all the tools that I was talking about that, that those, the teams created, you know, as far as being able to look at the different alternatives, FAQs, all those types of things. But then additionally, input is so important to us, and we know that there may be people that can't get to the, the different boundary meetings or have questions of, plus, you name it, right? It's going to be, and so we, this, this fall, started to pilot a tool called Let's Talk, which is a communication, allows parents to go in and essentially ask questions to us, and then based on the type of question, we can route them to whoever the subject matter expert is to be able to answer. And it also tracks them, ages them, so we know that we're getting back to everybody, that everybody's question's being addressed, and we'll be allowed to categorize them by different themes. And if we see a lot of questions about a certain thing, we can then maybe develop an FAQ and put it out there so people don't, you know, they, they know that it's been addressed. So, so we're excited about that tool. It's been a tool we used a long time ago, but we've resurrected it for this purpose. And so we just think it's going to be a great way for people to, to go in and communicate with us and ask any question, you know, and again, people sometimes just don't like to get up in the crowd and ask a question. This allows open input from anybody, and it also will allow us to capture those and summarize it and give it to you to say, here's the types of questions that people are asking out there. So that's kind of the process. It's exciting, there's a lot going on. I, I can't emphasize enough the, the team back there. Like I said, we would be spending tens of thousands of dollars on consultants, and these guys have really stepped up in being able to do anything from online maps to big maps to allowing Todd and I to look at some boundary scenarios. And I don't think anything we've asked them, Todd, that they haven't been able to figure out, right? Right? So, so that's great. It's great that we have that expertise in our, in our district. And so we're the unsung heroes that somehow magically make this stuff happen between the scenes, so.
Thank you, Doug and Deanne, Austin, Nicole, and Renee, for all that information. It's quite helpful. I just have a couple of questions about, well, I think I've seen on social media all the dates for the task force as well as the committee meetings, are they on our district website already as well? Okay. Approved, perfect. So they will be on there for the public, for them to access after today's meeting. And then I was wondering about when we, when the recommendations are made by the task force committee, when we have the community meetings, as well as on the website, it'd be great to have technology available so people could type in, type in their address even and just know when they go to that meeting, or we could type it in for them at that meeting, or do it at the website, figure out their new boundaries and possibly.
Yep. Yep. It's pretty intuitive, even I can find my home on there, so under five different scenarios or whatever we're playing around with, like, oh, wow, there it is, it works. So it's really cool, so. Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah. And that's good. We want everyone to feel heard and that, and that we've addressed them, their questions. And, you know, that's the key through all this, is to try to, to provide as much transparency as, as, as we can, because when you're, you know, it's going to be a lot of people impacted when you add a new middle school, and you then you have to redistribute everything. But we've got, we've got great schools, and like I said, it's just, it's just, it's going to be a good, a good process as we move through this, so.
And I think the other question people might have is why elementary boundaries are not being discussed at this point, and it's because our new elementary school, we have not started, picked a location yet, you know, and that, under the old bond task force, they said by two thousand twenty-four, I believe. And so since they will change again at that point, we thought it probably was included to change them and do that again in three years.
And there, and there could be a few, I call them tweaks to elementary boundaries. If, if, if you believe in the concept that, you know, you, as much as possible, you want certain elementary schools to feed middle schools, there, it's possible there could be a, you know, pocket that moves from, you know, from this elementary school to this elementary school. We don't envision it to be huge, but there could be some isolated incidents, incidents like that, so you kind of see how that plays out.
One thing I, that kind of created a little light bulb for me was the, just thinking about open enrollment for two thousand twenty. I think, you know, having just gone through open enrollment here and hearing from some parents, I don't know if we would think about a different process for open enrollment, perhaps an online process so that people aren't camping out for a day. So I think that I'd like us to maybe talk about that in the coming years, too, just in anticipation of the fact that come December of two thousand twenty, it will probably ramp up those people that apply for open enrollment. So just something I'd like us to consider and talk about further down the road. In fact, Carly and I have her at Jane McPhee, that's my address, same issue, so we, I think, we do need to explore what other alternatives there are. It would say, it would say BERT, too, I'm sure. They might not have computer, but you know, you could probably use the same argument, but there were many people who hadn't worked, you know, and their jobs didn't allow them to come up with it. I think there's not going to be a perfect scenario that we could pick for everybody, and so finding something that maybe just works better than what we have right now, I don't know what's out of.
Back to your original concern, Kate, when Carly and Cynthia brought that up to me yesterday, geez, well, how could we make it better? I don't know that that answer's intuitive, but I think the concept of looking at it and saying, is, can we build a better mousetrap? I think that makes a lot of sense. So it will be on our senior leadership team agenda to start that conversation, to see if, maybe we can, maybe we can't, maybe it's the best possible scenario already. Yeah, I hope, maybe we can do something better, but I know it's been a long time since we've looked at it, so it makes sense, not only because of this process, but also because of the length of time since we've addressed that issue prior to this one. It makes sense to have that conversation.
I know you said that the meeting structure is alternative, so I don't want to get in the weeds, but I look at like the topics and I think about, that's a lot of information to cover in two hours, ten to three. And so I think that's maybe what's giving you the most heartburn right now, is what happens if that first meeting, we spend a lot of time talking about introducing each other and the charge and the background, and then all of a sudden, we didn't really get, you know what I mean? So I don't know if we.
Yeah, if we can get stuff ahead of time.
Or have a catch-up meeting, just in case.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can start to develop, we can socialize a, you know, a fourth meeting date if needed type thing.
Or ask people to be willing to stay for an hour post the time that's scheduled, just since you already have everybody there, if they were, you know what I mean? Like, finding another date for thirty people will be challenging, but asking them upfront to be flexible with that end time and knowing you would never go longer than an hour past that, or just something, because I feel like, oh, that's a lot. Because I think the bond meetings were three hours long, right? And just, I'm going to do half of those. So I know it's not the same topic, but I feel like this might even be more emotional for people, and you might get people who just feel like they need to be heard. And so I would hate to feel like they walked out feeling like they didn't get a chance to say something because we were. Otherwise, I think, I think the structure looks really good. I like the process that we have gone through, giving people plenty of time to attend and really encouraging people to attend. I know the one question that I had asked you was, we had always said we're going to follow what we did for the bond, and in the bond, we kind of did it opposite, where we met, or we had community input meetings first, and then the committee met and they took all of those things and said, this is what we heard from the community, and so I'll give you another opportunity to explain why we maybe reversed that this time in this process.
I think one of the big reasons is we are, we're going to ask the task force to come up with recommendations versus the previous task force that came up with a recommendation. And so I think what we'll do with those recommendations then is take those out to the community at large and then bring a, a number of recommendations to the board. So you're not put in a box by, by anything, and you'll have access to all the information that took place during the task force, plus all the feedback that you get from the five community meetings. And then you'll have some time, and that'll be good and bad, but then you'll have some time to, to really vet all of the information that you have to come to some final conclusion. That's probably the biggest reason.
And then I just wanted to verify, similar to the bond task force, where.
And then I just wanted to verify, similar to the, um, bond task force where we had them kind of set up on that side of the room. There were many chairs set up and the public was welcome to, those weren't televised or anything, but it was an open door and the public was welcome to come and sit, not necessarily participate. Um, and that will be the same for these three public meetings, our three community.
Well, you were correct. Those are, those are public meetings. Anybody can come and observe those meetings. And we actually had a time at the, uh, during the bond task force for public input as well.
So if you didn't get a letter or a notification in the mail today, you can come, you can still come and listen and, you know, get that same information to be able to ask questions.
You know, Carly, I think that's a really good point to reiterate. There are a lot of opportunities for involvement here. Uh, hopefully this is set up so that if, if you didn't, uh, if you weren't involved in the end, then that falls on you because we're going to have three public meetings that are the task force. And certainly the task, the members of the task force will be central to those meetings. But all of the information is public and the participation at the end is, is public. Conversation with task force members or board members and employees in between meetings are options for everybody as well. Once the task force does their work, there are five community meetings for everybody to participate in. So, and, and then there's a good period of time between the last community meeting and the time that you'll take a vote as a board. So there really is a lot of opportunity for, for the public to enter in to what the final solution will be. So I think that's, that needs to be really highlighted is, I think, a strength of this process. Might make it messy at times, but I think it'll be a real strength of this process. Well, I'll, I'll give my thanks to, to Deanne and Doug et al. We've got a whole lot of people involved in this. Um, next, we'll go to the bond implementation. And here to speak on that topic is no stranger to this group, and that is Jeff Credy.
I'm gonna go fairly quick. Um, this is very similar to what you saw in, in July. There hasn't, there's been some changes, but, uh, majority of things, I tried to think of what I was gonna say in a deep, deep breath on this one, um, after July. But, uh, what we'll do is we'll probably bring these back just like this. And you'll just keep seeing more pieces of this added to it as we, um, build. But, uh, kind of the same format, a lot of the same sheets. And I'll kind of go over, uh, what, what I changed and what we're, what we're doing. Uh, if you go to page two, I'm not going to go through every one of these. So this is that, the spreadsheet that, uh, we put together with the CIT. And it lists all the buildings with the preventive maintenance and the, the bond information. So you've got all the buildings with the, kind of the projected preventive maintenance and those sort of things. You can see the, what's supposed to be highlighted, the, the first two, the CIP plan and the schedule with the CIP plan. Or, or the projects that we're going to try to schedule with them and some of the other PM projects that kind of fell within this. And what I tried to do was outline, and they're in red, is what you're going to start seeing in the upcoming capital budget. You probably saw some of them in last year's or this current year's budget, but what we're proposing to, to run forward into the next capital. So most of these, the, the bond stuff is fixed. So we're not moving anything on the bond. That's gonna stay stagnant. But it's the things that we're going to roll into the projects when they time for little efficiencies. Some of them won't, some will be outside of it, but most of them will be rolled into it. And you'll see that in, I've tried to put in what budget year, um, they are. And I'm not going to go way ahead of it. It's just that if they're in a current budget year or a next year's, then I'll put the two or three years if it's a three-year budget processor. So you can kind of see, you know, like, uh, Washington, we're going to do the cooling tower. That was listed under there. It's not going to be in any CIP. It's gonna be just a separate project. But as you go down and you'll start seeing, um, some of, some of Lincoln High Schools that were listed. And we've kind of met with them and, uh, that'll be coming up. We'll be planning for that next, um, after July. So we just had a little piece to do a survey over there and we, we have that completed. But we'll start planning that portion in July. I gotta get to one, um, let's see. You, you, some of these projects are just gonna be, they're just like, just capital outlay, O and M projects. So come through the process. But if you look at Cleveland, Cleveland's a prime example. We, we're planning on doing quite a bit, schedule them with, uh, with the CIP. And so you'll see those listed in red and that's going to be through 20, 20, 21, 21, 22 budget years. So I kind of show, tried to show you that and those are what we're trying to do. And you'll see a group of those come through, part of it. We're trying to balance it because that's going to be a two summer project. So we're going to try to balance that within the appropriate budget year. Re-ruffing, that's going to be a two-phase. Some of it's going to be in the CIP, some of it's not. We broke out, um, the main roof is scheduled to be done this summer. And that's in the current budget year and next budget year because we break it in two. But we're going to re-ruff the upper part of the roof, but not the lower part where we're going to be doing window replacements and glass block replacements. We'll do that after that step. So we try to break that in where it makes sense. So those are kind of some of the things you'll see, you'll see in this, in this book, this process. And then up to page 12, you'll see that. Robert Frost, we're gonna, we're gonna try to construct that Fourth Avenue drop-off, um, area in front of the school. And we're, we have that, that whole thing tore up. So, and then we're gonna also incorporate a new air conditioning unit. Um, that's at the end of its life and we have to, instead of putting a little small unit somewhere, we're gonna incorporate it, the tonnage into that unit and schedule that accordingly. So trying to make the most efficient use of the dollars that we have in the district. Forest Man, also some renovations, some roof repairs. We did a lot of roof repairs there or roof replacements, except for where we're tying in. We did that this summer, so they're pretty much somewhat depleted. So you'll, you'll see some of that and we're trying to look ahead and make sure we don't do something that we would, we would do. So Laura Wilder is another one that we'll be looking at, um, integrating some of those in this budget year because that's going to be budgeted. So you can kind of go down through that list and, uh, see what some of those are. And that kind of, um, is, is that first group of projects. And you'll, you'll kind of see that. Most of them, as, as we get done, you'll move to the completed, underway or uncompleted. So I think you see in the first one where, where we had land bought, we moved that to the completed and those sort of things. So try to give you an update. Um, page 12, this is the overall plan of CIP. So you can kind of look at where the fiscal year is, what the inflation numbers we, we built into those, our initial estimates. And you'll see that and where they roll up. And I think you saw that last time. Nothing's changed on that particular. Okay? Uh, page 16 is that red line. That'll be the red line. We'll kind of track. And, uh, you can kind of make sure I'm on task with this red line. We're, we're just in front of the red line on, in December. See that we got October, November, December, January, February, I've got them in quarters. And we are in the process, Robert Frost in, in the design process, Forrest Man is, Laura Wilder. Um, we've, we've had meetings with the buildings already. Um, we're scheduled next week for Forrest Man's, or Laura Wilder's final one. And so starting in January, February, March will be the bidding process for these, this first group of projects. And they're, they're all on, um, schedule for that. After the first of the year, we're going to start, uh, the planning and the design work at Cleveland. That won't be bid till next fall. Probably, we want to get that out because that's a big one. So maybe in December before anything starts, um, for the spring, we want to be one of the first ones out, not one of the last ones. And then by that time, you'll start seeing the high schools and middle schools, some of those subcontractors being opened and start coming off that project. So they'll, they'll be a little hungry for, for those, that project. So we're on, we're on track with, uh, those three CIP projects and then Cleveland will start up. JFK will start up, um, also next fiscal year in the design. We, we did the architectural selection, have them on board for that as well. So we're kind of trying to work a little bit ahead, um, but stay within the, the budget and the, the cycle that we have set up for that. And there is one project, if you see the reds when it anticipated completion, the Memorial, when that one is, is done. So we hit our first mark. Okay, then the next on page 18, um, this is a real detailed list of all the, all the items, um, how we expenditure. So the top part is the funding, then all the expenditures are kind of on the, on the left side. And the red is kind of anticipated. It's not finalized. The, the black is where we have firm numbers, um, associated with that. And, uh, this one actually shows the, uh, if you look, um, right down before the CO, those are change orders, 5% owner contingency. I've got that kind of right in the middle there. That's not added up to the totals, but it, it does add up, um, in the funding. And that is accounted for in the difference of that number. When you see the difference. That's funding versus all the, um, amounts that we spent, or, or anticipate spending. So the reds are anticipated spending and, um, so forth. So, um, some of the highlights, uh, we are, uh, project testing. We have a number for that, but that's a, a unit price. So as, hopefully that will come in under that. So it's not a firm number because it's based on soil testing. If, if things go, you know, that you need more testing, you have to do those testing. We are right now working on cameras, um, security buttons, card readers, phone systems. So we'll be going out here in the next month or two to get firm numbers on those. So you'll start seeing some of those crop up and come through as purchase orders or some type of orders as we go through. Then they'll turn into black when they have a firm number. So we're putting together the drawings for that right now. So we're pretty close to being done. And then we get into the furnishing and equipment and, uh, um, we're, we're meeting with some vendors, um, mid, mid-December to try to put some sample rooms together at Washington High School so we can kind of test some of them before we purchase them. So then we'll start putting those in. I mean, just remember, I mean, this one, the high school right now shows 5.6. That number grew from the board meeting once I plugged in and then we reduce some of the fees and the architect's fees and all that. Because it all, all kind of compounds and that's, that puts into these formulas. So, um, so that's, that's actually good news. And if we get better, we'll plug in the right numbers and see where we're at. But like I said, furniture, there's a, that includes all the computers, all the network drops, all the wireless access points. I, we just laid those out, about 150 wireless access points. So that will be good. And, uh, owner contingency, I already got a couple of items I want to run by you guys. And, uh, floor finishes that, uh, up in the science rooms will make the noise a little better from the second. That's been a concern. They had concrete, so we're, we're getting numbers now to put some tile floor in this science room. Yeah, so little things like that. I mean, nothing major, but just the smaller things. And another one is, um, that I plugged in for, in the capital budget is, and we'll, we'll have that decision as we balance that, is do sidewalks at CTE. Do we, do we link the CTE one into the project? Right now it goes right to the corner, but there's probably quite a bit of sidewalk that needs to be done to get to CTE. So those are the things we'll have to discuss as we move forward. And then Memorial, that's, um, I just have to get the final, final billings and reimbursements from the architects. And that will be done. And that's, that too is about 290,000 to the good. And then, uh, turn to page 20, it's Ben Rifle. Then you can see we, I think I'm, in July, we had that $200,000 buffer yard and city thing that we knew was coming. And that came through, so that actually was 199. So we, we could get you, that was a pretty good estimate. So that came through and that, so that turned, uh, turned black. And, uh, we're right now at 5.8 million to the good on, on that one. But if you take the inflation we had to make up for the project, it gets to about the two something. So, um, so we're, we're well on our way with both of those furnishings. Uh, as far as the, the cameras, the wireless access points and those sort of things, we're putting those together. And we should have numbers for those. We're working on those simultaneous to that. And, uh, signage and all that, we're pretty close to having that all ready to go, get some numbers. So those will start peeling away and then we'll be working on furnitures over the summer and get those ordered in the fall. So with that. And, uh, then the, the next, the last sheet, 21, is kind of the roll up of all these. This spreadsheet kind of takes everything that's in there and rolls it up. And it, so you got the, some laptop, what their initial CIP was, what the inflation numbers are, when you allocate it per building and per year. And then you have, uh, that bottom number rolls over. So you'll see what the construction cost is, what those line items are. And the reds, like I said, not bid yet or we haven't firm numbered them. And then, then you'll see the change order amounts that come through. And, uh, and then you'll, what I'll show you, and then I have that inflation. If you looked at the inflation, we, we had to make up about three, 3.6 million dollars on inflation. You know, for the overall program when we, when we related it. So we knew we had to make that up somewhere. And that's kind of a, who knows what that's gonna be? And we've more than made it up. And if you look at right now, we're at about 8.1 million on the program of what we've, we've bid, where, where we're at, um, to date. And if you want to look at, right now, we have, very bottom, I kind of plugged in some percentages. We bid 67% of the bond. So that doesn't include all the furniture in those numbers. But what we bid, so we're tracking about 6.3% below that. So those become big numbers when it's, uh, it could go the other way too. 5% below is a lot of money too. So we're in pretty good shape and, uh, that's kind of the report I have. And any questions, I'm certainly here to answer anything.
Thank you for keeping it on task and, you know, all the planning that goes in before the ground's broken and all that helps to avoid those extra costs that we would see on change orders. So we really appreciate that. And, um, I had one question on the, on the Ben Rifle, on that 199 from the city. Is that, that security system like what we have at this?
No.
So that's potential.
That still probably will be coming. Um, yeah, so that's not part of that. So we'll have to make sure that that, that was, um, the city changed their mind one week before we bid it on how they were going to do the BMPs and the drainage system. And so we had to redesign the whole thing. And we had a night, we wouldn't have started this year or hit the 21 mark without us doing it.
And so, um, on the city ordinance, is there a certain number of capacity that they have for the security system that we had to do at Jefferson High School or is it kind of a floating number that they're part of the department?
It's a, it's a cost per square foot. So that one will probably be, if you, if you say what, how we estimated Jefferson, it'll probably be about 180,000. Now, that only is if, when we go in and test it, that you don't have signals. So there might be parts of the building that we do have signals. So we don't know that until the, the building is enclosed and then we go in and test the signal. So, so that's, that's kind of a floating target on both schools. So, and that's a requirement on, on a lot of new construction I'm hearing. Other buildings are being asked to do the same.
I feel like I spend a lot of time in high school, junior museum, I think I asked this before, but I just want to verify when we're replacing the features for those, about, you know, easier to access to people. Um, that is scheduled for.
We're gonna try to roll that in. We're gonna try to roll that in when we do that, that weight room and the training room and that gym area. So we're gonna try to do that, because then we'll have rails, and right now, they don't have railings, so you'll enhance that. We're gonna lose seats, because the new code has light eyes. But it is what it's gonna be.
And that's scheduled for 21, 20? Is that kind of looking at that for us?
Yeah, I believe so, if you.
I'm guessing that's something you're going to say.
Yes, we'll, we'll coordinate, we'll coordinate, so we can do that and put that in and do it in some, so, yeah. Yeah, if you look at, we're gonna try to fund that in 21, 22, 22, 23. So not this incoming budget year, but the following two, February. So if I be constructed right in the mid, that summer between, it'll go into the both budget years, so we'll be working in that spring.
I just like to reiterate every time we talk about this, how the easy things to talk about for the bond or the new schools. But when you look at this document and all of the schools that are being touched, again, we appreciate the community's support for not just building new buildings, but for being able to enhance and upgrade, make good safety measures and security things for so many of our buildings across the district. So for all of us who are maybe paying a little bit more in our taxes, we're all getting something back, whether we're going to the new middle school or high school or not. There's so many different projects going on across the district that really are making the environments of our education that we're providing to better. So from a community perspective, I think we all appreciate that. Just want to remind people, I think it's easy to get lost, and we're excited by the bright new brick and all the construction that's going on at some of these major projects.
You'll, you'll probably see some, some more projects coming up, like at the bubble year, that's not on here. I didn't, I'm not changing what was done with the bond and that listing, so I'm not adding things to it. So when you see something else, and it's not on here, that's fine. I'm just keeping that bond documents separate. To do another color, do a lot of this. Hey, Christmas Eve.
Thank you very much, John. I'll move on to school board committee reports.
I don't really have much to say. We don't really have anything for policy. Calendar doesn't meet until January, and I'm trying to see.
We met?
Yeah, but I covered for you. I was there for you.
Apparently, I did not meet, so I will let you cover it up.
Policy calendar, as Carly said, Pat, we met. I thought about in terms of our schools, talking a couple of safety areas, one category rule, corners, they play this top, and there's speech on.
Are we just going down? Okay. The Sioux Falls Public School Education Foundation met last night. I'm really proud to report that our revenues exceeded our budget income projections by around $66,000. Noteworthy advance to that increase would be the $25,000 that was raised for our signature event last month, and that was primarily due to sponsorships. And we hope to continue to increase ticket sales as we plan for next year's event. We also had $19,000 that was raised at the breakfast this fall. We also, our endowment balance, we have over $113,000. So that means that equates to about $12,000 available for grants. I do want to make mention that, and I mentioned this last time, that we got a $50,000 grant from Verizon, and those dollars are specific to STEM, STEM curriculum, that the teachers would be interested in developing for the classroom. I also want to remind people to go out and test drive a car. If you test drive a car at Grand Automotive, you get to fill out a form, and $20 will go to a teacher of your choice. So if you could remind your school principals to get that information out to parents, and that will run through December 31st. The Head Start Early Childhood Policy Council met last week. We were fortunate to hear the update on preschool program, which really got rave reviews, and it's such a testament to the administration that makes that happen and the teachers day in and day out. Two weeks ago, I was part of the self-assessment review process for our annual federal grant dollars. Of that, really across the board, as far as school readiness, the curriculum fidelity, that all met the standards needed to continue to receive the grants. We looked at helping see the vision hearing organizations, that would go in to family services, being attendance, and familial setting, those were also needing, what was needed for those guidelines. And I went for the, we had talked about, yeah, anyway, I knew you wouldn't be there, so we're good. We got that covered. Insurance committee met. We had a slight enrollment, you know, increase, net life transitions going well. Year-to-date claims for medical and prescription were at about 9.2 million net pay. The HACE projections were at 9.5 million, so it's, it's great that claims are under what the projections look like for medical and prescription, and dental and vision claims, they were under projection as well, so. Good to think? That's it?
Yeah, nothing. Sports Authority has not met. We did go last week to peer for ASBSD at the board meeting, and then Centia was a champion at the delegate assembly. Housing has not met. That's all I have on budget.
Southeast Tech Council met November 19th. We have had great sign-ups for their new certificates and programs of both construction, medical assisting, wireless infrastructure. The State Tech Board met yesterday. They appear, they need to appear in Sioux Falls to do the budget address by Governor Nellon being the first to want to come to the board at the same time. And so they were, they're discussing some issues, including hospital maintenance. The healthcare sector breakfast had over 100 participants. The horticultural technologies foster program also had 102 participants. And the next one is the legislative sector breakfast, December 17th, at 7:30 at STI. Deb Owens, Dave Rosenbaum, and myself are gonna be on this for that one, I'd like to attend. We add some tech council members, we, they're going to pull a day in the life of the Southeast Tech student, and they have not said a date on that, but it'll be an interesting thing for community, for board members, kind of see what a tech student that they go through to both register and how they propose to. Chamber met November 20th. The, last week and this week, the last two candidates have come in for interview, to replace interim Director David P. Hasta, so we should know soon who that will be, the person who plays replacement. The Deborah Owen from the advocacy legislative platform is busy getting ready for legislative session, and so December 10th, at 7:30 in the morning, they're posting kind of what, this is what's going to possibly happen in legislative session, and then December 12th, it's gonna be a legislator chamber mixer. And attending that, Sioux Empire Leadership Council met November 20th. We had a presentation from Shelley Unruh from Housing, basically talking about how the mayor has asked the two boards to merge, or the housing, we must to kind of use better resources and do that and get more partnerships going between them. And then we, the census, people came in and spoke about the importance of having every person counted, and it's over $1,500 per person times 10 years, if that person's not counted in the census. So, you know, the school district is, you'd be a natural partner to help maybe get the word out about the census, and they're really making, it's a two-page amount, so that's a 10-page document. So they really hit on that, and that is important to us, and those numbers as well. And then I'd be remiss not to, once again, the big announcement yesterday, the David and Christine Vohlen gift to the district for $600,000, $150,000 to the Promise and Beauty Friends, it's even where the brand started, and $150,000 to the Hope Coalition, that's like the, the most, and Randall Beck helped start it for preschool. Just an amazing gift for our community and for education in our community. Steve has also raised an additional $102,000 outside of that million-dollar gift through different partnerships and support on his board. And Lowell, their gift's almost funded. McGovern, we're still working with the council to get those, and Hayward is our next elementary that we're focusing on, is for getting those gifts out. All those are there, so we probably have to say that. A journey to STI for, which is right now.